I would like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, February 10th, 2020, starting here at 6:00 PM. First item is Declare Quorum, which we do have. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, everlasting, just as for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and
Item three is our public forum. Has anybody signed up tonight? Okay, nobody's signed up. Item four is the Superintendent's Recognitions. Mrs. Parks, I guess the board should come out in front of the dais now.
It is my pleasure to present the Superintendent's Leadership Award this evening to the ladies from salons at Tuscan Square. If you ladies would like to join us up front. Leadership is the attitude assumed by those with a vision to raise expectations, who are committed to achieving a goal, and whose conviction inspires others through enthusiasm and optimism to reach that goal. This award recognizes those who go above and beyond expectations to serve a cause greater than themselves. And today, we are very, very proud to honor the salons at Tuscan Square for their efforts to support our homeless students in Temple ISD. For the last two years, Rosa Jenkins, Holly Hussey, Victoria Tovar, and Crystal Dawson, who's not with us this evening, have organized the Angel Tree Campaign at their salon, which allowed their clients to sponsor a TISD student in need with a Christmas gift. As a result, 146 TISD students' Christmases were made a little bit brighter. Many of us hear of a need and are inspired to make a difference, but taking the initiative to really take that next step and do something about it is really what sets you ladies apart. Rosa, Holly, Victoria, thank you for turning your hearts into action and for caring for our children in the most selfless of ways. And for that, we present you this evening with the Superintendent's Leadership Award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause).
Giselle, do you want to get closer for a picture? You're fine.[187.12][187.12](laughter) I mean, you know how to use the Zoom. I still am working on that.
When did you...
Yes, they're gonna...
Yes. It was.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make a few comments. First of all, congratulations, you're the first business to win the Superintendent's Leadership Award. Let's give them a round of applause for that.[213.51][213.51](applause). And I will tell you, when I heard the story, I was overwhelmed. You know, there's an expectation for some of us or certain folks to look after our students, but you do it without expectation, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you once again, congratulations, and thanks for being a partner for TISD. Thank you. And you can shake all the board members' hands. When you come through here, I'll get out of your way, and we'll get a photo op. You get one more picture in the middle, okay?
Yeah, you have to go first and shake their hand.[247.23][247.23](laughter).
It's a little chaotic, but we try to organize it.
Ladies, can I come up here and stand in front of Dr. Ott and Mr. Posey?
Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you all so much.
A lot of students.
Thank you.
A lot of students.
I'm also excited tonight to be able to talk about our Alumni Spotlight Program. Temple ISD has a long history of excellence, and we have had many, many talented graduates who have exemplified our vision to become leaders in their local communities and beyond. Temple ISD is very excited to be able to recognize, excuse me, our accomplished alumni throughout the years and through reinstating our Alumni Recognition Program. It was initialized more than five years ago, and the original honorees of the Wildcat Alumni Program were Dr. Bob Pryor, class of '69, who was a Scott &amp; White and Baylor Scott &amp; White Executive, Danny Dunn, class of '96, former mayor of Temple and local real estate broker, Brian Floka, class of '87, Caldecott Award-winning illustrator, and Beau Harvey, class of '92, former PDI executive and current restaurateur, who is getting ready to open a restaurant downtown with a couple of his business partners. As we looked into relaunching our alumni program, we thought it was really important to honor those who were honored originally. And Bob, Brian, and Beau send their gratitude for their recognition and regret that they were unable to attend, but Danny Dunn was able to attend, and we would like to recognize him now. So Danny, if you'll please come forward.
I didn't have anything going on.[388.12][388.12](laughter).
And for that, we will make you our official First Alumni Spotlight recipient, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thanks so much.[400.12][400.12](applause).
Congratulations, you're the Barbie inaugural class. We have many individuals that have graduated from Temple and have really done great things. And we made an attempt at honoring...
Do I really...
Yes.
We... Okay. We made an attempt on honoring our alumni in different ways. Of course, TEF does it through the Distinguished Alumni Event, but as a school district, we, you know, attempted to do that, and I think there were posters up in the buildings and so forth. But we wanted to do this in a way that's more memorable and more frequent than just once in a while. We have so many fantastic alumni. Of course, Danny and the others mentioned they certainly fit that mold. So, we wanted to take the time to do this in a way that's systematic and that truly honors them at a board meeting, and give them a chance to brag about the amazing education they got in Temple ISD as well. So, anyway, thank you for your contributions, and the ones that were unable to show up, we thank them as well. Congratulations, Danny.
Say a few words?
I wanted to say a few things, only because I never get the opportunity to anymore. But when I heard the names announced of the other recipients, Dr. Bob Pryor, who was the president and CEO of the state of Texas' largest healthcare facility, Brian Floka, who is a Caldecott Award-winning children's author, Beau Harvey, who's been extremely successful and is an incredible entrepreneur, and then there's me. And when I got the call five years ago asking me to be part of this, I didn't believe it because my time as a Temple Wildcat is still one of the most important things in my life. And I could not have received a better education anywhere in the country, I think, than what I received in Temple, Texas. The coolest thing about this award was that in the summer of 2016, I'd not seen the poster, it was a huge poster, and I had heard that it was on the glass of the library or in a window on the library at the high school. I just happened to have my 20-year class reunion, and we took a tour of the high school. So, the first time I saw it, I was with all of my classmates, and I thought, hey, this is kind of cool.[571.16][571.16](laughter) You know, it was like, well, this is all right, and I just kind of kept standing by it and letting everybody walk by and say, hey, isn't that you? Oh, yes, it is. It's going really well.
We could have waited one more year.
Yeah, I know, you should have, you should have.[583.12][583.12](laughter) But, and I will wrap this up, and thank you for indulging me for a moment. I want to say this about Temple and being a Wildcat. I say in this, being a Wildcat is not a mascot, it's a state of mind, and I think that that's true very much today as it was five years ago when I said it. And being a Wildcat is about the academics, it's about the athletics, it's the sense of belonging, it's the IB program, it's the Fine Arts program. It's as a real estate broker, having people fly in from all over the country and asking me to show them houses in Temple because they want to be part of TISD because they know of the great things that you're doing. And I'm proud of Temple because it's a diverse community, and I could not wish a better education on anyone than the one that I received in Temple ISD. So, thank you very much.[645.00][645.00](applause).
While they are finishing their photo op, our new program will be called the Alumni Spotlight, and we will begin taking applications tomorrow on our website for any alumni of Temple ISD who have done great things to better their community. So, if you know of a graduate, or if you are a graduate, please visit our website tomorrow and make those recommendations. And our goal is to recognize alum more frequently, hopefully eight to 10 a year is our goal. So, thank you very much.
Item four is Executive Hires. Mr. Palmer?
No executive hires.
No executive hires. Item five is the Board President's Report. A is Annual Update of the Tax Investment Zone Number One. Bren Myers, the Temple City Manager, will provide the report on the zone. Mrs. Myers, thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you, guys, for having me. I think I have a presentation, if you could pull it up for me. While they're doing that, I'll say that two years ago, I was here with you, well, not here, but in your old facility with you, giving this report, and I said at that time that I was excited to come back the following year and join you in this beautiful new facility for that. Unfortunately, I missed that report. My father passed away that week, so I think Tracy Bernard, our fabulous finance director, provided it. So, this is my first report to you all in your new facility. So, thank you for having me here tonight, and I will be brief, but hopefully informative, giving this report on the activities of the Temple Reinvestment Zone for the past fiscal year 2019. There we go, great. 2019 was a successful year for the City of Temple's Reinvestment Zone Number One, after completing infrastructure projects in the industrial park that were funded by the zone. Most of you know that we were successful in attracting a couple of very large capital investments and job creators to our industrial park, both Niagara Bottling Company as well as East Penn have selected Temple and chosen Temple as their home for their next investments. Niagara is actually up and running. They shipped their first pallet of bottled water out of the Temple facility in December, and East Penn will break ground later this year. So, two really important investments made possible by the Temple ISD's participation in the Reinvestment Zone, so I want to thank you all for that. In addition, the long-awaited Santa Fe Plaza, where we are here tonight, was finally finished to completion, and that really brought a vision that this community has been working on for several decades to fruition. And again, that project would not have been possible without the strong partnership and support and participation of the Temple Independent School District in the Reinvestment Zone, so we greatly appreciate your support and participation. The Reinvestment Zone is just kind of the basics of what the zone is. It is a geographic area that's established within the City of Temple city limits. In this area, the city, or the zone, collects an increment. So, basically, anything above the base taxes that were paid when the zone was established in 1982 goes into the zone fund and is used and is reinvested in that geographic area on primarily infrastructure projects to attract more investment in that area, to grow the tax base, to grow our jobs. And so, the Temple Reinvestment Zone is a fairly large geographic area. It covers the Temple's North Industrial Park, it covers, as you can see, our airport area, a park area that we call our corporate campus, which is home to some of our large corporate headquarters such as Fikes and McLean Company and McLean Group. The zone also importantly covers downtown in the City of Temple, which we have been heavily investing in through the zone over the last few years. The zone also covers the T-Med area, or the Temple Medical Education District area, as well as the Southeast Industrial Park, or also called the Synergy Industrial Park. The T-Med area is a newer addition to the Reinvestment Zone. It was added in 2008, I believe. So, Temple ISD does not participate in that portion of the zone, but you do in the rest of the areas. State law changed and did not allow you to participate in the expansion. The zone is represented, has a Board of Directors that represent the various taxing entities that participate. You, of course, have authorized Steve Wright to be your representative on the board, so we thank him for his service on the board throughout the years and continuing. I wanted to highlight just a few projects that came to completion in fiscal year 2019 for you or that we began working on in earnest. So, the first one I've already mentioned is the Santa Fe Plaza and Santa Fe Market Trail Project, but I'll mention it again because it's significant and important and shows really a fantastic example of the partnership between the City of Temple and TISD in what we're doing and the work we're doing together. So, you all are very familiar with the Plaza and the Market Trail, but it is the centerpiece of our downtown master plan. The projects create a single walkable connection through the heart of the city, starting at Whistlestop Playground, continuing through the new Santa Fe Plaza, and on to the Santa Fe Market Trail. The Santa Fe Business Center and the new TISD Administration Building anchor the large Plaza area. Of course, there's also a stage, pedestrian walkways, lighting, landscaping, and a beautiful interactive fountain that my children love. Another important project that was completed in 2019 through the Reinvestment Zone was the revitalization of the old military airbase runway at the Drawn Miller Temple Regional Airport. So, this was a critical project for the airport. It allowed us to revitalize that taxiway that was not in, it was so deteriorated that it was not in serviceable condition, and the two large hangars that are located at the airport could not be accessed. So, that was an important project that was supported through the Reinvestment Zone. I've mentioned already the successful attraction of both Niagara and East Penn. An important project that was funded through the Reinvestment Zone that helped us bring those two businesses to the community was the roadway, which is yet to be named. I am accepting applications for naming of that road, so right now, we're calling it the Rail Backage Road, which is not a great name. So, if you have good ideas, let me know. But we installed the roadway on attractive land that will serve both Niagara and East Penn, as well as provide future opportunities for growth in that same tract of land, so future business opportunities and investment opportunities there. One of the most significant projects that the zone has been working on over the course of a decade has been the Outer Loop Project. It's a continuation of a project that will connect North I-35 and South I-35 with a loop around the community. This is a four-lane roadway that includes the associated water drainage, sign improvements, as well as adding connections to existing roadways. So, we have been funding this project and completing this project mile by mile. The next phase of the project starts this year, and then the two final phases of the part of the Outer Loop that goes through the industrial park are scheduled to be funded and completed in fiscal year 2022. So, the project is big, significant, it's over $70 million when you total all the phases, and so that's been an important project for the community and for the businesses in that area. Another significant project that's been supported in part by the Reinvestment Zone has been our Crossroads Park, which is our newest sportsplex to be built in the city. Crossroads will feature softball, baseball, soccer fields, bleachers, tennis courts, playgrounds, concession stands, and a disc golf course. It is located adjacent to the Pepper Creek Trail System, and that trail system runs through the park. It has plenty of parking available for visitors and citizens. So, the zone's primary contribution to this park, the main part of this park, was funded through the 2015 Parks Bond that the community passed, but the zone did contribute to this project primarily through the installation of regional detention in the park that will allow the rest of the surrounding area to develop more efficiently. And then finally, a very exciting project that also highlights the great partnership between TISD and the City of Temple and the Reinvestment Zone is the 31st Street Project at I-35, right in front of the high school. So, this project was funded for design and is now ready to, coming soon for construction. We're actually out for bid on this project now, so this project will soon be under construction, and is, again, another fantastic example of the partnership between the zone, the city, and the TISD. So, just a little bit about the financial highlights of the zone. Of course, the major source of revenue for the Reinvestment Zone is taxes from the increment in the zone. There are some other minor sources of revenue, but the vast majority of the funds for the Reinvestment Zone come from taxes from the eight participating taxing entities. Temple ISD is the most significant taxing entity that participates in the zone. So, again, I cannot thank you enough for your support and your participation in this important project and this important partnership for our community. TISD contributes almost 67% of the total increment to the zone. What we use the money for, largely for public improvements. There are a few other categories, debt service, some other minor things, but the vast majority of the money is used for public improvements. And you can see on the screen there a summary of for 2019 what those public improvements are. I've already talked about the highlights of those, but they're things like improvements in downtown, the Outer Loop, our gateway projects, roadways, and infrastructure in the industrial park, investments in Crossroads Park and T-Med, as well as some rail maintenance. So, that is the summary of the use of funds for 2019. You can see that the total budget for 2019 was just over $42.5 million. We've spent $16.7, but that's just because many projects are in the engineering phase, and that money has been carried forward to this year when construction will begin. So, that really completes the highlights that I wanted to share with you tonight. I will be more than happy to answer any questions. Again, I thank you for your participation. I do have physical copies for you of the summary of the annual report, and will be happy to provide any additional detailed information that you might need or want.
Thank you very much. Members, any comments? Do you want to turn... I'm sorry.
At the airport, the improvements that we made there, is there any plans in the future to do different services out of there for us, flight services?
In terms of commercial flight service?
Yes, yes.
No, sir. The regional airport is really visioned as a general aviation airport, so we do not anticipate that we will have the capacity or the support to support commercial air service, unfortunately.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I do have these physical copies. Should I leave them with Christine? Christine will get them for me. Thank you.
And I just want to take a second to thank Bren Myers for being here, first of all, for the presentation, but I want to thank you for, you kept alluding to the partnership in terms of the school district with the city, but I want to thank you for working with the school district. There's, I foresee a lot of exciting projects in the future between the two of us that could save the community taxpayer dollars, number one, but be of mutual benefit to everyone involved and the greater good of the community. But I appreciate your six-year plan, which is fantastic. If you haven't seen it, it's really detailed, and your vision for the city, and thanks for working with us and including us as part of that. We're grateful to you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bren. All right. Item two is the Tasby 2018 to 2020 Additive Agenda. Members, you have a copy at your desk. Tasby sent that to us to look at. It's based upon the latest additions from the September state meeting that Virginia was our delegate at, so just for everybody's information. Item C is Future Items of Discussion. Is there any items we wish to discuss at a future board meeting? Okay. And D is Important Dates. Dr. Ott.
Board members, if I can draw your attention to the important dates, I've highlighted a few of them that I want to review with the board. I'll start with this Sunday, we have our CAC Family Series Literacy in the Theater for our students and parents. We have our TEF Full Board Meeting that Monday, February 17th, at noon here in the Admin Building. I think a few of you actually attended the last college series installment by Temple High School. The next one is at the High School Library at 5:30 on February 20th. I really think our counselors have done a great job, and some of our local colleges that have helped and participated in working with our families to provide them information that they need with respect to college preparation, whether it's aptitude testing, in this case, it's grants and scholarships. So, I would encourage you to attend if you have the opportunity to. February 24th, we have a student holiday, but our staff does not have a holiday, we have a workday. And then February 26th is our School Board Policy Committee Meeting. The 27th, we have a Facilities Committee Meeting, and I also have on here highlighted the University of Mary Harden Baylor Cohort Professional Development Meeting. And basically what that is, we have a group of student teachers from UMHB that we actually provide several opportunities throughout the year to work with them and give them professional development as a cohort. And something unique that I'll share with the board, if I haven't already, is at the last meeting, one of the student teachers really bragged about Temple ISD and got real excited about it, and we know we hire X amount of elementary teachers a year anyway. So, I think within 30 minutes, Mr. Palmer went up and gave her a letter of assurance. So, she ended up getting offered a position right there on the spot, very exciting moment. I know when I had my first job offer, it was very exciting coming out of college, so it's a really neat group to get a chance to interact with, and hopefully, we're able to hire every single one of them in the next year. We have, February 28th, which is a Friday, we have the NAACP Founder's Day 2020 Banquet. The actual keynote is Adrian Kennedy from the Economic Development Corporation. I know we have several board members that have signed up to attend. I believe, Maryland, we have a table, is that correct? And we have some of our senior leadership team going as well. It's a fantastic event, and for a good cause, obviously, for scholarships and so forth for our students. March 1st through the, oh, let me back up, February 29th, that Saturday, we have Temple Daily Telegram Day for women from 9:00 to 4:00 at the Mayborn Center. And we're going to do something different this year in terms of participation. Christine, Amy Hayes, and Donna Ward will all be participating. They're going to set up a booth, it's going to be a chance to market the school district and a chance to, I don't know, maybe recruit some employees, who knows? So, we're going to have a good presence there, and if you happen to be attending, please feel free and stop by our booth. I appreciate Donna, Christine, and Amy for spending their Saturday there representing the school district. representing the school district. March 1st through the 31st, Texas History Month. And March 2nd is the TEF Academic Recognition Ceremony, 6:30 PM at Western Hills Church of Christ. I want to encourage everyone to attend that event. It's a very special event that highlights our students and their achievements as well. And that is all I have, Dan.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is consent items. Consideration for our approval tonight. Items 7A through H, 1 through 2. What is the pleasure of the board for these items?
Make a motion that we approve them all together.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item eight is action items, human resources. A, 1, notification from superintendent of outside employment as adjunct professor at the University of Mary Harden Baylor. The members, the policy is attached in our board book. Dr. Bobby Ott will be teaching at the University of Mary Harden Baylor for the fall of 2020. Okay? That's just for notification purposes. B is curriculum and instructions. B1, update on HB3 requirement for teacher reading academy training. Dr. Adams.
Good evening, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, Board of Trustees. So, you may remember, several months ago, I came and I gave an update on the legislative update on all the requirements from House Bill 3. And so, one of those specific items was a requirement for our teachers, our early literacy teachers, kindergarten through third grade, that they would be required to attend a reading academy by the school year of 2022, 2023. And so, there was lots of discussion about how we were going to roll that out, what that was going to look like. And so, the state, through a series of webinars and different information, has provided an update for us of what those requirements actually really look like now and the cost associated with those. So, we wanted to come back and kind of give you an update on how we're going to be working through this process to ensure all our teachers have this required training. Remember, after that, the school year 2022, 2023, a teacher will not be able to teach in a kinder through third grade classroom without this training. So, it is important that we have a good, strong plan. So, just a reminder about the requirements. It's not only for teachers, but it's also for principals. Specifically, the law does say the word principal. And so, currently, our principals, and we have a group of teachers who have gone through a pilot of this training, which has been great for Temple, will actually have the only teachers who have this training completed prior to the requirement. But, our principals will not get credit for that, and they will have to repeat the training again. It also, the commissioner has told us that special area teachers originally in the law, our music, our art, and our physical education teachers who taught kinder through third grade would be required to have that training. However, he has said that the commissioner is going to propose a rulemaking that those teachers will not have to have that requirement. That's not actually been rolled out yet, but he's assured us that he'll do that. And there may be some consideration for teachers who don't teach language arts directly, not requiring that. But, as of right now, it requires every kinder through third grade teacher, including special education teachers. Okay? So, there's two ways that teachers can receive this training. There's two professional development models. And so, the first one is called the comprehensive model. That's what you're probably most familiar with. That's just face-to-face instruction. So, the teacher would be required to sit through 10 days of professional development, as well as participate in two observations each semester, where someone would come into the classroom, observe them teaching a literacy lesson, and then give them coaching and feedback. And so, they would be required to do that over an 11-month stand. So, starting in July and must be completed by June of the following year. The other model is a blended model. And the blended model means that teachers would go through online modules, so they would just kind of be an online student, where they would do online modules, and then they would have to videotape or upload artifacts of them actually delivering literacy lessons, possibly student works, possibly lesson plans. It depends on the module, and they would have to do that. That's about an 80-hour requirement, where the other is a 10-day face-to-face. The difference in the module is that for the first training, you'll see in the comprehensive model, the teachers just have to complete the training. In the blended model, the teachers have to demonstrate proficiency. So, we do probably have to think about our first-year teacher who's never taught kindergarten language arts, and our 20-year veteran who could probably teach the class, right? And so, there's some options for our teachers, different abilities.
And Lisa, there's a financial consideration-
Yes, sir.
-in that as well.
Yes, I was going to come to that, but I can certainly talk about it now. Okay, thank you. So, there are three options for implementation. And so, the state says we can deliver it three ways. We can be an authorized provider. That's not a good option for us. We don't want to be a professional development company. So, that's not a good option for us. And that would be us front-loading everything. The second is that we could have a local implementation. Or, the third is where we would actually have a, let me go back one. Or, the third would be where we would actually have a participant fee. So, we would use like Region 12, and we would send our folks there to get training. So, at first glance, it thinks like, well, maybe we should use Region 12 and their expertise. However, there's some challenges to that. The first is that the cost of that participant fee, if you use a teacher to participate in the blended model, that's about $400 per teacher. For face-to-face, it's $3,000 per teacher. We're also held to their schedule. So, their training dates may not be in alignment with our calendar dates. So, when we have professional development, that may not be when they're offering it. And so, that's a challenge. And then, frankly, I won't know how our teachers are doing, and I can't provide support for our teachers. So, in my mind, that's not a good option for us either. The third option is really the cohort leader option, and that allows us to maintain a very flat rate each year as we do it, because there's just a base fee that we would pay, that we would pay to the region center to kind of help us. We would have a memorandum of understanding, so they could help us troubleshoot and help us with the curriculum that we would be required to do. But, also, we can build our professional development dates aligned to our calendar, and we would have local folks who could support our teachers and ensure that they're successful. So, we have opted for the cohort leader. And so, we are going to identify a literacy coach, both to be our blended cohort leader and a literacy coach to be our comprehensive cohort leader. And so, our literacy coach for the blended cohort, her job will be to enroll and monitors teachers' progress on those online modules. And they'll provide virtual office hours weekly to help teachers if they need assistance. And we can offer open time for them to work on it during their professional development days, during August and throughout the school year. So, that coach will be there to facilitate and support them. But, their job will be to monitor their progress, but also to evaluate their artifacts. So, if we have a teacher that's struggling with demonstrating proficiency, our coach could work with that teacher within our school district. The comprehensive cohort leader, that would be a literacy coach who would be giving the 10 days of face-to-face instruction, and also going in and observing our teachers who are doing that and giving them feedback, which is what a literacy coach does currently. So, that's very aligned to their job. And so, the only challenge there is that the cohort leader has to be approved by the state of Texas, or by TEA. And so, we will apply on March 9th, and then they have to pass a screener before they're allowed to deliver the professional development. So, we have identified three literacy coaches currently, but we'll be looking to identify a few more just in case, just to make sure. Okay? Here's the cost and the rollout plan that Dr. Ott was talking about a little bit. So, this next school year, we will be identifying and working with our kinder through first-grade teachers. And so, you'll notice that there's a flat rate. Remember, I told you, if we do it locally, we're able to maintain a basic cost. And so, it's about $22,000 every year for us to provide that professional development. And that is, the onus is on the local school district. It's bundled into the House Bill 3 monies. If we were to do the participant fee, it is double that money. It's about $50,000 for us to pay for each teacher to attend training. Next year, the following year, we will identify our first and our second and third-grade teachers, and we'll also ask our literacy coaches who are new to make sure they have that training. And then, our final year, we'll catch up any teachers that are new, K through 3, and we're going to be asking our fourth-grade teachers to attend that training as well. On an elementary campus, sometimes you have four sections of third grade, and sometimes you have three sections of third grade and four sections of fourth grade, and teachers have to move sometimes in grade levels. Well, in order to have flexibility of our master schedule, we have to ensure that our fourth-grade teachers have that training. Otherwise, Joe and I will be moving a fourth-grade teacher to a third-grade classroom at another campus. And our principals, as loving as they are, they'd like to keep their teachers on their campus instead of sharing. And so, we will make sure that we catch up any teachers. And remember, I told you that our principals have to do that training, so I'm not going to ask them to do it again until the very last year, because I've asked them to commit 10 days this year to a training that they will not receive credit for. And they went on Saturdays and in the summer. Okay? Additionally, this is how we'll be delivering the professional development. So, we will utilize our summer and our summer exchange days. Remember, we ask our teachers to do two days of training in the summer, as well as our district professional development days. And we'll utilize our PLCs and other opportunities as well. Our cohort leaders will have to extend their time a little bit in the summer so that they're able to provide that professional development. And so, there's a little bit of a bump, about $9,000. Our literacy coaches are on a teacher's contract, so we have to bump those days just a little bit to ensure that they're able to do that work. But, that will allow us to ensure that our teachers are able to do the training aligned to their professional development. So, we're not doing anything else on top of that. And we have been looking at the possibility of providing the teachers a stipend for some of those summer days that are when they're off-contract and they have to do training as well. Okay? And so, that concludes our presentation on the reading academies. As you can see, what we've tried to do is minimize the cost to the school district and to make this required training that TEA is asking our teachers to do as palatable as possible for our teachers. I do think it's good training. It's just that we want to ensure that it aligns to their requirements of their job, and we're not asking them to do multiple things throughout the school year. This will be the focus for kinder in first grade throughout this first year. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Adams? Okay. Well, thank you. Our next item is consideration for approval or recommendation of textbook adoption. And I believe you're going to be doing-
Yes, Mrs. Rogers is sick today. I'm sorry. So, you're stuck listening to me again. So, the 9th through 12th grade, this year is the year that we'll be adopting our English Language Arts textbooks, or resources, instructional resources, in grades 9 through 12. And in the fall, you approve the committee. And so, we had teachers from the high school, as well as our special education teachers, instructional coaches, et cetera, instructional technology specialists. And they've met and previewed materials, reviewed things. They're very critical and wonderful teachers, and they've really focused on ensuring that we would get the best resources for our students. At this point, they have completed a vote, and they are recommending that we would adopt the English Language Arts and Reading in grades 9 through 12 from McGraw-Hill. The specific product is called Study Sync. And so, that's the textbook adoption recommendation.
Any questions for Dr. Adams? This does require a board approval. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Suarez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Item C, finance facilities. C1, report on property tax collection activities. Mr. Harvey Allen.
Hi. Good evening, board and Dr. Ott. Just wanted to introduce Harvey Allen and Leslie Harold are here. They are with the law firm of McCurry, Veselka, Bragg, and Allen, and they work hand-in-hand with our tax appraisal district and are responsible for collecting our delinquent property taxes. And so, they have provided an annual report of their efforts. And I will let Harvey walk you through that report tonight.
Mr. Allen, thank you very much for coming tonight for the report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Members of the board, Dr. Ott, again, as Vaden has said, I'm Harvey Allen with McCurry, Veselka, Bragg, and Allen. Our firm represents the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County, which collects taxes for all of the taxing units located here in Bell County. With me this evening is Leslie Harold. You know, I had, for a long time, called Leslie my senior legal assistant there at the Tax Appraisal of Bell County. But, in the last couple of years, I decided to call her my lead legal assistant. However, knowing that her two children, now both grown adults, graduated from Temple ISD, as we were sitting there tonight, Leslie reminded me that her five-year-old grandson is enrolled in kindergarten at the Temple Independent School District. Accordingly, I think I'm going to revert back to calling her my senior legal assistant, because I think she has learned, she has earned that title. But, anyway. On chart, I'm going to start on chart number one, if that, if you can find chart number one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not realize I needed chart number one. I will have it here.
Chart number one is on page 6 of the report, if that helps you any. It's entitled Total Revenue from Tax Collections. While they're looking for that, you know, one question that always comes up is, well, Harvey, you know, how are you paid for the services you render to the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County? And the answer to that is that the delinquent property owners from whom we collect pay our fee. Not only do they pay our fee for actually collecting the delinquent taxes, but all the other services that we provide to the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County. And those include consultation on various administrative issues that may arise there. We also represent the district before the appraisal review board, and we represent the district when the district gets sued by property owners for various sundry issues. Anyway, so, all those services are provided at no cost to the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County, and therefore, no cost to the Temple Independent School District. Did we find chart number one?
No.
All right. We're making progress. I'll also say, while we have a minute, that I was privileged to attend the distinguished alumni dinner for the Temple Independent School District a few, a couple of months ago, and had the opportunity to bid on a lunch with Drake and McLean. And I was fortunate enough to be one of the winners of that, and got to spend a very enjoyable two and a half hours having lunch with five other individuals and Mr. McLean. It was a real treat, and it was well worth the money that MBVA donated to the foundation. That was a great opportunity. I enjoyed it.
The foundation appreciates that very much, but the big question is, did you have Whataburger at the lunch?
I'm sorry, you didn't have-
Did you have Whataburger at the lunch?
No, no. We, I had a Cobb salad, and I believe that Mr. McLean had a house salad and a grilled cheese sandwich.
Not the details, but that seems to be one of his favorite meals. That's why I was asking.
Well, he chose the venue, I suppose. And the venue was the Hilton Garden Inn. So, not Whataburger. Any of it. Okay. So, now, we are at chart number one. And I think this is the most significant chart that I have to present to you tonight, because it presents the total revenue from tax collections that the administration and the board have to operate the Temple Independent School District on. And as you can see from the table at the bottom of the page, the TISD in the fiscal year ending 6/30 of 2019 had a really, really good collection year. 104.43% of your adjusted levy was collected during that fiscal year. When you say- Well, you say, well, Harvey, how is that possible? You got a hundred and four point four three percent, I'm sorry, Harvard, Temple Independent School District, rather. Well, you add the current taxes that were collected, the delinquent taxes that were collected, and the penalties and interest that were collected on those taxes, you add all that together as the numerator, divide that by the adjusted levy, and you get the hundred and four percent. I, you know, as you can see, you know, last year, you also had a hundred and two. When I calculated the hundred and four percent, I, is that right? I mean, that's, that's really, really good, and I'm not patting myself on the back, so to speak, I just want to make sure that number was accurate before I came in and reported it to the board, and I can assure you that it is. So, anyway, you had a really, really good tax collection year in the last fiscal year. Now, of course, you know, this fiscal year ending in 6/30 of 19, so obviously, you're well on the way to 6/30 of 20. Hopefully, we can duplicate that performance, but a hundred and four percent is hard to come by. Any questions on chart number one? Okay, if not, I'll move on to chart number two. And chart number two is the collection of the last five years of taxes assessed by the Temple Independent School District, and that goes through December 31st of 2019. And you can see the cumulative percentage of each of those tax years that have been collected. So, for the 2018 year, you got ninety-nine point three five percent collected, and for the 2014 year, five years, you get ninety-nine point eight four percent of every dollar that was assessed has been accounted for in collections or, well, primarily in collections. Now, again, those numbers are without any penalty and interest, that's just the base tax collected for those individual tax years. Any, any questions on that? Now, as I indicated, you know, this is cumulative collections of each individual tax year, and each year, the Tax Appraisal Bell County staff collects the vast majority of that. As noted there, for the 2018 year, only $731,000 of the $53,000 you levy actually was referred to us on July 1st. So, the Tax Appraisal Bell County does a wonderful job of collecting those taxes currently, or at least before they were referred to us. Any questions on chart number two? On chart number three, chart number three is the, is the work of McCurry, Veselka, Bragg, and Allen to collect those delinquent taxes that are referred to us or outstanding, I should say, on July 1st of the first year of delinquency. Again, 2018 taxes, on July 1, there was $731,000 that was outstanding. In six months, fifty-two percent of that has been collected. Go down to 2014, we collected ninety, ninety point four three percent of the taxes that were referred to us, and you go, I'm sorry, you go to fifteen, which is eighty-eight point four eight, and that, that is equivalent to ninety-nine point eight five percent of each levy. Again, that is taxes collected for each year, cumulative basis. Any questions on chart number three? So, again, that, those charts altogether, one, two, and three, tell a really pretty good story with regard to tax collections. Financially, the Temple Independent School District does really well in terms of property tax collections. The second half of the report entitled Delinquent Property Tax Collection Activity is merely a statistical overview of the collection activities initiated by my law firm on behalf of the Temple Independent School District. It gives you the notices sent, suits filed, judgments obtained, et cetera. Until finally, we come down to the ultimate remedy, which is, keep going? Keep going? Tax sales, there you go. Okay, right here. Okay. So, since July, I'm sorry, since October of 17 through November of 19, we posted a hundred and fifty-two, a hundred and fifty-two properties for sale. Fortunately, eighty-six of those were paid before the sale, sixty-one of them were actually had to be sold. Five were bid in trust, and such will leave for these years, as well as others, we've now resold nine of those properties. How do we get there, just very quickly? You know, during, during the course of the collection year, my firm sends out on behalf of the Tax Appraisal Bell County five notices, mass mailings to every delinquent property owner. For those individuals who do not respond, you know, we then conduct some title research, we do a lot of different research-type activities. We file suit. For those individuals who don't respond to that, we take judgment, and for those individuals who don't respond to the notice of judgment, they only wind up on this sales sheet. That's the ultimate remedy. Again, that's not what we want to do, we're not in the real estate business, we don't want to be in the real estate business, but sometimes, as indicated here, that is, that is what's necessary in order to collect those taxes. I want to think, in my back, I'm pretty certain, that our activities on behalf of the Temple Independent School District all the way through here contribute to the really good current collection percentage that you have, because I think over the years, the property owners have learned that if they don't pay their taxes currently, they'll be hearing from MBBA. And frankly, when you hear from MBBA, it's expensive. So, again, I like to think that we contribute significantly to the current collection percentages, therefore, the total revenue that the district receives for property tax collections. Are there any questions from anyone?
Members, any questions, Mr. Allen? All right.
Virginia's smiling over there, she's heard this report a couple of weeks ago.
Just thank you for all your work, Harvey, Leslie, and the whole crew.
Appreciate all your hard work that you do on our behalf.
Thank you very much, it's a privilege to represent you and to work for you, at least indirectly, and if there's anything we can ever do for you, please don't hesitate to holler.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know that the Education Foundation would probably welcome your attendance again at this year's event.
Yeah, we did that, and I think Leslie participated in the latest run that you had. I know at one time, you used to call it the Big Blue.
White.
Yeah, now, it's been renamed something else, and I think Leslie participated in that this year.
Very good.
Even though she's a senior legal assistant.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item two is the THS Fine Arts Update, and Mr. Kent Boyd.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, and Board, thank you all very much. Excited to show you a few pictures tonight from the Fine Arts Project over at High School. As you know, we've been working on this for a while, and we've had to displace our students for this school year, but we are nearing the end, and so, we're excited about that. Some of you all have had chances to see these at different times or in different stages of completion with facility committee meetings, but we wanted for you all and for the public to, to get a view of really where we are and as we come down the home stretch on our project. So, all right, as you see, that's the exterior rendering for the project at High School that you all approved a while back, and so, that's what we've been working on, of course, designed by Stand Tech and being constructed by American Constructors. That's what it looks like today, so if you haven't driven by there in a while, it looks, it's taking shape, looking good. We were out there at six o'clock the morning, it snowed, to check the lighting. We picked the worst morning of all to do that, but the lighting for the overhang and trying to make sure that it was positioned correctly so that it'll have the desired effect from, from not just 31st Street, but especially from I-35. We wanted to show you inside and show you some of the spaces and what's taking shape. Of course, all of the disciplines are receiving improvements, all of them but dance, but that received one previously in the CTE expansion, but all of the others are, and if you recall, visual arts was probably the area that was most spread out, they were in different locations throughout the campus, so through this project, we're getting them all in one area. It was also very important that we bring in natural light, and so, for the visual arts spaces, we have some features that I'll highlight. This outdoor area is the existing outdoor patio area that we will turn into a secured outdoor study plaza and outdoor place for our students to go out and work on projects, but there are large, for some of these that front that area, we have large roll-up doors that will allow them to take their projects out and work in and out almost interchangeably. For, for the rooms that did not have, did not have the ability to have exterior light from doors or windows, we brought in something called light tubes. And if you notice, these, these four really bright-looking squares that just look like bright lights, those are actually, those are actually solar light tubes that bring in light from outside, and so, even for two of the interior rooms that don't have natural lighting from the outside in a traditional sense, they will have natural lighting in the classrooms via the solar tubes. I'll also mention, and you'll see in several of these pictures, one of the really nice enhancements for all of these spaces is storage, that's something that we sorely needed, and so, these are areas that have specialized storage for art supplies and for the art projects that they're working on. Moving on to orchestra space, that is in the area which it used to how, which it has formerly been housed, but what, that area faced a complete renovation, so we completely demoed that area as all of the areas, and so, that is being completely rebuilt. So, you'll notice some of these spaces here, you'll have office spaces, you'll have practice spaces, you'll have additional storage spaces, and it'll be a very nice dedicated space for orchestra. Storage spaces in general, I mentioned this a while ago, and this is throughout, and this is just a representation of what we have. Again, something that is always needed and desired by staff and students, something that was brought up during the planning process, so we've tried to take those spaces that maybe in the past were somewhat wasted with, with old equipment or just big general open areas, and we've tried to make them much more functional, and so, their storage spaces are included in a lot of the areas, and this is representative of some of those areas. Percussion room, this is a pretty interesting space, and those of you that have seen this on a tour know, we talked about it. Currently, or historically, percussion has been outside in, housed in the portable building. They've had that out there, and it's been outside of the building for years and years. What we've been able to do through here is take older existing space and reprogram that into percussion room space, and what that really means is, that's not just any old room or space or classroom. These are enforced, really heavily enforced walls that separate this area from the rest of the building. The roof is, there are no spaces for sound to bleed through, and so, so this is a representation of what that room looks like. That'll be a really nice dedicated space for a group that historically has always been housed in a portable. Theater arts room, we have two theater arts classrooms like we've historically had, but the really nice enhancement that we're, that we're performing here is in one of those, which is the largest room, is going to not only serve as the theater arts classroom with storage space, office space, and so forth, but it will also serve as, as in fact, a black box type area. And so, I showed this room to show you that there is no dropped ceiling in here, that's by design. The top will be painted a dark gray, like we've done in a lot of these places, and then, what they will have installed up here at the top is a lighting grid that can be raised and lowered, students can work on that, they can learn on those lighting grids without having to go into the regular stage and the regular auditorium, so they can save time, and they can work on it here, and then they can actually use this space as a small black box performance space because of that lighting grid and what we're able to do in that space. Also, over here has some nice shelving for all of the awards that that department wins. You'll see that in several places here. Choir room also is getting a complete overhaul, that area was gutted, we took out old existing built-in risers, and that'll be replaced with relocatable movable risers that can be set up, taken down, and that actually gives them more flexibility with that space. That will, the choir room will also have, continue to have office space, storied space too, like the other disciplines. This is the hallway that, I don't know if you know where this is, this is the hallway which goes down the steps into the back behind the auditorium. These are the theater arts classrooms, there were old abandoned restrooms over here on this side, and then there's some equipment back here, this is the backside of the auditorium. So, this, the original hallways in this area, all getting renovation. You see that right now, we're, it looks pretty rough, but once all of the other renovation is completed, we will come in and replace the terrazzo stair treads, and those will look like they did when it was new. But all of these, and this is just a viewpoint from another angle, all of these spaces look, have the same type of finishings that we had in the CTE area and throughout the high school. We feature wall laminate colors that certainly with blue, but also some natural tones and natural colors in there to try to make the campus flow and be more seamless in the way it looks, and that's, that's always been a desire of ours on these additions and renovations. And then, we'll talk the new corridors real quickly. This is the area that's been added out that leads to the new band hall, the new office space, and to what is effectively becoming a new entrance for fine arts on the west side. As you know, the high school has a main entrance, through the bond projects, we have in fact created a distinct entrance for CTE also in that area. Athletics has a distinct front door, obviously, to their spaces, so this gives fine arts something similar in that respect, and it gives its own identified new entrance area. This is another view of that area. What this will have and feature is, one, large space for student traffic, which helps the traffic flow in that whole area, we've never had that before, it's been more of a horseshoe-shaped. This will allow a complete square for students to maneuver through the area, which will help, but we also feature some really nice stor, presentation spaces where we'll be able to showcase our visual arts. So, when people come in this way, they'll see visual arts front and center, they'll see a very nice open space, and then, one last feature here, some of the features here, these are architectural features that just add a very modern and pleasant view of the area, and certainly makes it a great place to showcase our students' artwork. The new band hall, of course, is really the largest single piece of the addition, and it represents a wonderful increase in space for our students in band, and you can see, and you can get a sense of what that looks like with that picture. One of the benefits here, the window's face to the north, so that's always beneficial because you're getting diffused sunlight, not direct sunlight, it's also not as hot, so that's always beneficial in a room of this size. You see the other side of it here, some things I'll also point out here, you see, these are, these will be practice spaces, we will have a number of those throughout the, throughout the band hall. We also feature a lot of trophy space here, too, so that's something we've made sure to incorporate in all of our fine arts areas, because obviously, we've got a very award-winning program. One other picture just kind of gives you another vantage point, you see all the different practice areas, and then this is a shot from inside those practice areas looking out, lots of practice, lots of storage, adequate office space, and very little wasted space. Again, using a lot of existing spaces that we had, making them much more usable in addition to the added space that we have. A couple of last few shots that I think are pretty cool, this is the overhead view a year ago. You see, there's, there's the ninth grade center, here's the old band hall, here's what was the old orchestra area, and of course, you see the back of house of the auditorium here, 31st Street running parallel here. And here's what it looks like this past week. There you see it. Pretty cool, you can see the footprint of the addition here, all the work going on. Again, this will be the entrance area that can be used for those coming and going from fine arts. We won't have parking in- We won't have parking in this area anymore, but what that allows us to do is have a drive and a loading and unloading spot for 18-wheelers and for our truck, especially for band, but for all other, all other groups. We will be opening August 2020, ready for kids to start the school year. We'll actually be moving in during the course of June and July, so we are excited. We're excited for what this represents for our community, for our image, mostly what it represents for our staff and our students and for their programs. Does the board have any questions that I can answer on that? Any questions?
Well, thank you very, I appreciate that update.
We're exciting. We're excited. I'm pumped.
Ready to see it completed, but this is great to see.
Yes, we are all very ready to see it completed, too, so.
Can I make a few comments? I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank Kent and Katrina and the fine arts staff. They have worked very close, and the high school administration, in making sure that these things come to fruition. You know, everything's considered in this project design, what's best for students, and of course, any financial constraints that we have going into it. I do foresee a future campus tour or board retreat where we get a chance to walk through the new fine arts addition when it's complete. A couple of things that Kent highlighted, and I just want to emphasize or accentuate when you're out in the community and talking with folks. First of all, you'll see every single discipline in fine arts minus dance, which was touched at the last, during the CTE construction. But every one of them now have improved and modernized spaces. And some of them are very unique. You know, for example, in theater, I challenge you to find as many one-high school districts that have a practice area, a separate black box for practice. I mean, that is, you know, multi-high school district, you may see that, like in Round Rock at one particular high school where everyone gets to participate. The other thing I would tell you is, and this is something that Kent talked about, we're really trying to highlight our featured programs. You know, he talked about how CTE has its own separate entrance. And of course, it's not just CTE, that's also advanced academics, because the classrooms from the L Wing are over in the CT as well upstairs. So there's a distinct area for those two programs, and that helps with student traffic flow. When students can just go to a particular spot, whether, or parents can go to a particular spot, and they don't have to meander all the way through the main part of the high school every time they want to get somewhere. That really helps with traffic flow, line of sight, safety, and so forth. The other thing is, there's a marketing value there. It's facing west toward I-35. I mean, you saw the last image, second to last image. I mean, what a fantastic representation of Temple High School when that piece is finished. And then the space that Kent showed you, the corridors on the inside when you walk in, where the office will be, and so forth, all the space that we now have, much like the admin building where we can feature the history, all over the walls, we have a chance to feature our students' work right when you walk in of every single discipline. Sure, you can go to the band hall and see band hall trophies, but you know, you have a chance to see every discipline in the main corridor. So there's going to be a very distinct point of entry. There'll be a place that over time will be identified by the community, has fine arts, and that's where you're going to see a lot of student recognition and so forth. So it's a really good opportunity. And the last thing I would share with you is, last year, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe last year was the first year we had a fine arts signing. Is that correct? Well, that will be able to take place in that front foyer. I mean, how wonderful will that be, right? All the disciplines will be there and have a chance to join in, a nice space out front to celebrate our students. So there's so many opportunities that come out of this, and we're grateful to the taxpayers for this as being part of the bond, no question about it. And I believe this will deliver to the vision that they had and maybe even exceed it in many respects. And once again, thanks to Katrina and the fine arts staff, and Kent, Stan Tech, America, and everybody that's worked on this project. It's very special. We're really excited about it, really excited.
Dr. Ott, can I mention a couple of extra things when you said that? You know, one thing that has been a focal point of ours through these bond projects have been security. We know that that high school had so many disparate pieces really to it, and a lot of kids walking outside. So while athletic facilities still will be separate, that's not unusual for those to be separate, the rest of the high school will all be under one roof for the first time since it was built, and it was only one building. Because this will eliminate separate buildings for CTE, separate buildings for L Wing, separate portables that have been out there that have housed ISS, that have housed band, that have housed other entities. So that's a real important part. This is completing that vision that we started to get everything under one roof and to create a more secure environment.
In this day and age, that's so important for security, and we're able to do that.
Critical. And this will wrap that up and really put us in a good shape there. Also, too, like Dr. Ott said, I want to say thank you to Katrina. We work a lot on these things, and obviously, it's a give and take. And while we want to deliver the best that we can, obviously, I'm always cognizant of what the bond is, what the cost is, and what that, what the bottom line is. And I will say, their department have, they've really done a great job of being reasonable, but also asking for everything that they needed and making sure that they got what was important to them, but not getting fluffy or not getting, not going overboard. And so that really is a pleasure to work with them, work with people that are like that, and they've done a really good job of being very responsible with the budget, but at the same time, designing something and getting something they wanted. And so I appreciate her, appreciate Kent and all of his efforts. He's in all these meetings, too. And so we're excited. We'll be glad to open it up and show it to you all in a few months. Show it to everybody.
All right. Thank you, Kent. Item three, consideration for approval of the donation of right-of-way and easement interest to the City of Temple for public improvements to North 31st Street.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Posey. As you all know, actually, Ms. Myers touched on this earlier when she was in here, talking about the improvements to 31st Street and the roundabout and so forth. As you all know, that's occurring right now, or it's very close, it's in planning, and it's about to take off. These improvements will improve traffic flow, pedestrian safety, and egress to the campus from both I-35 and from 31st Street. But in order to make these improvements on the east side or the Temple High School side of 31st Street, the city is asking for us to donate easement interest and right-of-way needed for the improvements. Specifically, they're requesting that we deed the necessary property for the sidewalk and for the new entrance to the campus parking lot and to grant public utility easement for the installation of all of those utilities underground. And there's a lot of detail in your board book, all of the surveyor notes, legal descriptions, maps, and the actual agreements themselves. I'm not going to go through all of that with you all. I don't think anyone would be awake when we got finished. But I did want to show you on an over, just on a map of the whole area, that you could get an idea of, in a sense, what we're asking tonight. So if you look at this map, uh-oh. Did I go back? Did I do that?
That's okay. We can get it back.
I'm not going, maybe I better not touch this then. That was my fault, I think. I'll take ownership for it anyway. How about that? So I'll just do it like this. So as you can see, 31st Street runs right through the middle. You can see by the diagram really where the, where the traffic circle will be installed and how that will come into and enter into the new parking lot that we're also working on right now simultaneously. So there are four pieces to what the city is asking us to approve tonight, or asking for your approval tonight. Three of them are in pink, and one is in green. And I've tried to kind of split those out. One is a pink section that basically runs along 31st Street right outside of Wildcat Stadium. The next is a section that runs right into the parking lot that actually encompasses the traffic circle. And then down here on the far north end, you'll see a very, very slight pink sliver which is being requested, and then a green piece right next to it. And really what that means is, for the school to do the work, for the city to do the work, I'm sorry, the school needs to be granted right-of-way access to all of those spaces to make that work. The three pink spaces would be truly right-of-way access that they're asking for a general warranty deed on. The green piece is simply an easement being requested. We still retain ownership of that, but that's an easement they're requesting to be allowed to put utilities underground. This is all critical to their project and critical to our project ultimately. Mr. Wolf and I have sat in meetings recently, also with the city, to go over these, to make sure we understood these and how that's going to play into the improvements we're going to make in our parking lot. So I just wanted to kind of graphically show you, all of the, those pages basically are broken into those spaces right there. And so that's what the city is asking us. We support this initiative, and so therefore, the administration recommends these donations and the requests of the city. Do you all have any specific questions about that?
Any questions from Mr. Boyd? This does require approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Myers.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Sani. All in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Finally is...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. Item four is consideration for approval of the Order of Election for Temple Independent School District for the purpose of Temple ISD Board of Trustees, District Two and Seven. Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Sorry about that. So what we want to bring to you tonight are two items. One, the first, is the Order of Election, and this is the official order of the election that hereby orders the election for May 2nd for Districts Two and Seven. As you know, applications for filing the place of this ballot can be filed by this Friday, the 14th. And then early voting by personal appearance will be conducted each day at the City of Temple Municipal Building. So that's what we bring to you tonight, is the requesting approval of the Order of Election.
Members, any questions? Mr. Boyd? Does require approval.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Suarez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Five, consideration for approval of the Joint Election Agreement with the City of Temple, May 2nd, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. In your packet, you had a draft of a joint election agreement. We, for several years now, we have agreed to joint agreements with the city to conduct elections. This is something that's been allowed for several years now by the state, and it saves taxpayers money and allows for greater efficiencies in elections, for entities to go in together like this. We've worked very closely with them. It's another one of the partnerships we've had. And so what you see tonight is the draft of that. The city has not actually approved it yet. They have it on their agenda to approve later this week. So what we're asking for is your approval tonight to designate the election as, or designate the joint election agreement that allows us to work with the city on that.
Okay. Any questions? This does require approval, too.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dr. Sani.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Suarez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And item six, consideration for approval to purchase video board.
I'll take that one, Mr. Posey. If I may, Board of Trustees, I'd like to walk through some background information before your consideration. First, I'll start by saying that our current scoreboard is roughly 14 years old, and so the equipment is absolutely obsolete. In fact, I think we're only able to find one person, one person or group. One person. I'll tell you, this is... One person or group. Is that better? Okay. One person or group that can actually operate the system. So for the past several years, there's been talk in the community, whether it's parents, whether it's people that attend to different events, you know, businesses or what have you, asking us to explore a replacement. As with any facility that you have in a school district, you do have replacement cycles, and you have to look at those and carefully consider those. I can tell you that we have kicked this can down the road for several years when it's come up, and partly it's because we wanted to look for, I may have to use this. Okay. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, good. We are having a lot of technical difficulties this evening. I'll tell you, it's a little frustrating. So we have kicked the can down the road for some time, and part of it has been for financial reasons. But this June has opened up a window, and let me explain why. This June, we actually make our last loan payment as a school district on a loan that we have carried for about 12 years. That loan payment is for the last scoreboard. That's a long-term, 12 years for a scoreboard. But not only that, track repairs and some field repairs that we've had in the past several years. The annual payment for that loan is roughly $140,000. So with that loan rolling off, if we were to continue to commit to that amount that's already been obligated for the last 12 years, which basically means not accruing an additional expense to our budget in subsequent years, if we were just to continue to pay that amount for five more years, that would be $700,000. We do not want to carry a term of more than five or six years on any type of equipment like this. I just, I don't think that's good business practice. So with that being said, we went out and researched companies that actually installed video boards and landed on Daktronics. Daktronics is a group that is the largest distributor in the state of Texas, and actually in the country when it comes to high school installations, installation of video boards, and collegiate. Pro, I'm not sure, but I know that they have a footprint in professional stadiums as well, or stadiums for professional sports. The total of the video board, as you can see in your packet, is a little over a million. And our desire was to go into this as a shared expense, for the school district to not front the entire cost or pay for the entire cost of the video board. And we wanted to do this with community and business, especially local businesses, because there are some advertising opportunities that are, and marketing possibilities for our businesses that are extraordinary, that come out of having a video board. So the next step is we set up a sponsorship program at different levels that allowed local businesses the opportunity to use our space on the board in a customized manner. In fact, there are three different levels that they could participate in sponsorships. When we were trying to do the math on this purchase, if we were going to pay for five more years, that's $700,000. On a total purchase, that's a little over a million. That leaves a difference of under $400,000. So in discussions with the facilities committee, it was determined that we, as a school district, and Daktronics and their marketing department, needed to secure at a minimum $360,000 in sponsorships from local businesses. And these aren't verbal. These need to be hard commitments that are signed. And so what I will tell you is that I'm happy to report that we have $450,000 in commitment that is signed from local businesses for sponsorships, and we're not finished. We're continuing forward with securing partnerships and advertising possibilities. So we have exceeded that threshold, and that's why we are here presenting this item. I will tell you that we do not want another 12-year financial obligation. This, or this video board, the life of these video boards are 12 years or beyond, and so we look at this as a good opportunity. The video board is not just for athletics. Sure, soccer teams play, your band performs, your football team plays on it, but we do lots of events. We have track meets, we do our veterans parade. We have track meets, we do our veterans parade out there with the exception of last year because of the weather. So, there are Easter egg hunt, we have a community Easter egg hunt, we do. So, there are lots of opportunities here. So, these sponsorships or these businesses saw a great opportunity because it wasn't just the length of a season for a particular sport. This is something that they could advertise and market their business all year round. So, it was a really good opportunity for them. If the board did approve this purchase, well, let me back up a second. There's another revenue generator in this. You know, at one time, Temple hosted many playoff games. And those of you that have been here a long time, you know that. And part of it is because of the location. I mean, right off the interstate, right between Austin and Dallas. I mean, what a great opportunity. But there are three reasons that we have lost in opportunities to host playoff games. One is because of the lights, which those were fixed last year. As you know, our lights did not meet UIL standards. They didn't even meet playing standards for UIL in terms of safety for about the last six years. So, those have been upgraded. And so, that box is checked. The second reason has been because of parking. You've heard some discussions this evening, we're looking at improving that and the construction on that will be taking place probably in the next couple of months and then, of course, through the summer. And then, the third has been the scoreboard. I will tell you that teams, they want an experience if you're hosting their playoff games. And they have choices and they have options. What does a playoff game or hosting one really do for a community in terms of revenue or a school district? Well, here's what it does. In looking at the average total gross receipts for, and this includes rental fee, parking, and concession, to host a playoff game could yield at 4A to 6A, could yield a school district anywhere between $18,000 and $21,000. So, it is a significant revenue generator for a school district. And another opportunity, there's no penalty in paying something off quicker, okay? So, there's another opportunity there. If the board continues forward with this or approves the purchase, and I know you're considering this evening, the next step for the school district would be to secure the financing for the difference between the sponsorships and what is left. And that will be something we will have to take to you at a future board meeting. Payments will not begin until August. The installation of this would, if approved tonight, would be installed no later than the end of June. So, it will be up and ready and plenty of time for the next school year, no matter what the event is. I will tell you, this has been a large undertaking. There's been a lot of time and effort and thought behind this. And we have been fortunate to work with Daktronics and their marketing arm. I know that we've had several administrators involved in this, but more importantly, our community and business partners have stepped up, not just financially, but this is a desire of theirs as well. It's just an overall improvement. And sure, the financial contribution speaks volumes. I mean, we're talking $450,000 and that is not small change for any business or group of businesses. So, we are very fortunate to have those commitments that are signed already with several probably outstanding ones left. And if you talk to other school districts, they will tell you that if the interest wasn't there now, when it's installed, it certainly picks up again. So, businesses, when they see something, typically they'll gravitate to that, maybe more so than just seeing renderings. So, with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board. You do have a timeline at your place from when we started exploring this possibility to where we're at now and some items, if it's approved, that would need to take place after this meeting. So, at this point, I leave it to the board for your consideration.
Go ahead. Ronnie. Dr. Ott, I just want to say thank you to you and your team for taking on this project. This is something that the community has been asking about and wanting to see an upgrade and improvement from our current board right now. I know I was at the girls' soccer game Friday night at the Wildcat Stadium with my family and I was with my mom. And she was sitting next to me, looked over at the board and said, you know, the district needs to get another board. And I said, well, come Monday, we may do that. And so, it's not just for football, it's for all the different athletic events that take place, plus the band, other things that go on in the stadium. But this is a project that the community through advertising is chipping in quite a bit of money. And the way it's financed, this is, will be a good thing for the district. Are there any other questions? This does require a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Suarez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. The motion is passed. D, Student Services, didn't know items Mr. talked about. E is Board Community Reports. Number one, Facilities Committee Update, January 9th, 2020 and January 30th, 2020. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. No one addressed the committee during the public forum. Discussion of Meredith Dunbar ECA Project. Stan Tech represented, provided an overview of the Meredith Dunbar project scope. The project will be featured in replacement of all utilities as well as safety upgrades and ADA improvements. In addition, the campus will receive significant interior improvements to include the replacement of all flooring, ceiling, lighting, and installation of new doors, laminate in the hallway and additions in the kitchen and cafeteria spaces will receive thorough renovation. The total project cost will be $9 million and all renovation will be complete for the time of the 2022, 2122 school year. Two of the auxiliary facility, several members of committee toured the auxiliary service complex. Mr. Wolf provided information and led the tour of the maintenance grounds and warehouse and school nutrition facilities. All right. Committee meeting held Thursday, January 30th, 2020. No one addressed the committee during the public forum. Item B, 31st Street update. Mr. Boyd provided an update on the coordination effort of the city for the 31st Street project near Temple High School. To make improvements, the city requested that the district deed the necessary property and grant easement. Those requests were approved earlier tonight. Item C, Hector P. Garcia Park Update. The city has prepared a draft of master plan for a playground and walking trail at Hector P. Garcia. Joint use project would allow Garcia students to have access to use of the park during school while the public would not have access after hours. The city will present the final plan in March. Meredith Dunbar recognition. Dr. Ott discussed the potential recognition of Joe Green at the Meredith Dunbar. With the major campus improvement coming soon, this was an opportune time to recognize Mr. Green for the impact he has had on the community. Committee authorized Dr. Ott to proceed. Item E, property discussion. Dr. Ott discussed the future of Emerson. While the district has no plan for the property, the city would like to develop a housing addition as a part of the overall redevelopment effort in that neighborhood. The committee authorized Dr. Ott to discuss the property with the city. Stan Tech presented two options for the placement of future buildings in relation to drives, parking, and other amenities at the property on Old Highway 95. The main difference in the two options revolved around campus access that respect to major thoroughfares currently in design. The committee preferred the first option with future independent egress points with the internal drives opposed to having a street dissect the property. All agreed this option would create a more secure environment. Facilities auxiliary services update. Stan Tech presented an update master plan for the auxiliary service facilities. The administration will be meeting the reinvestment zone to represent, gauge their interest in the potential participation. Item G, sponsorship and marketing service. Dr. Ott provided and obtained the sponsorship for the video board. The committee expressed support for moving ahead with examining future options. This project was approved earlier in the meeting. Our next committee meeting will be held Thursday, February 27th, 2020 at 4:00 p.m. here at the CA. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Gaines. Yeah.
I just want to make two comments. First of all, it was good to see the smiling faces from some Hector P. Garcia staff back there and as you should. And I want to encourage you, Kent, I believe it's next month that they will come present the city? Is that right?
Yes.
Please talk to your colleagues and encourage them to come to the board meeting next month because you will actually see designs and everything. And Mrs. Reyes has been involved, so your wishes are bundled in there somewhere, knowing her. But I certainly want to encourage you to come. And we are very excited that Hector P. Garcia has an opportunity to not only feel like a neighborhood school like it already does, and that's because of our amazing staff, but also become a true neighborhood school. So, we're very excited about that. And the second thing, I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to reach out to Mr. Joe Green. You know, we've had conversations about this and we believe that it's the right thing. And I will tell you, after talking with him on the phone, it is absolutely validated that it is the right thing and it's good on many levels. So, we're supposed to get together and have a Joe Green Day in Temple. I don't know when that is. I will do whatever to work around his schedule, not only because he's bigger than me, but because he's a busy man, believe it or not. And so, he's going to come down and we're going to sit down and go through plans of the school district and really just try to get his ideas and see how he wants to be honored and make sure that we do our best to honor his wishes. And I think that, like I said, that is just a positive thing on many fronts and we're excited to be part of it. So, thank you, board members, for allowing us the opportunity to connect with him and kind of move this down the road. Thanks.
All right. Thanks. Item two, Policy Committee Update. Meeting was held January 29th, 2020 at 4:00 p.m. Mrs. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. No one addressed the Board of Trustees during the public forum section of the meeting. Potential recommendation for the Friends of Temple ISD was discussed. CW Local, the policy for naming of facilities was reviewed after its recent adoption. The next step is the list of potential names. Submissions will be made to the Communications Department. This policy does not cover naming of parts of facilities or fields. For these types of spaces, the current practice of board and administration collaboration was discussed and will be continued. The committee was asked if there were any other items they would like to see or any information they wanted to request for a future meeting. There was none. Meeting adjourned at 4:51 p.m. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 26th, 2020 at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. There have been no other items on our agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.